It is November 18th. Coeur d'Alene City Council is all here. Roll call, please, Joe.
English.
Here.
Gookin.
Yeah.
Wood.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Thank you. Invitation tonight is Angela Gifford from the Village of Hope, Coeur d'Alene. Welcome, Angela. If you please stand.
She's here. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this incredibly amazing city, the people, the beauty, the resources that we have to steward. And, Lord, I just thank you for the members of this council that help us steward the business of the city and serve our public, Lord. And I just ask that you bless them with wisdom, not just tonight, but throughout their weeks and their days. And, God, I ask that you bless them with daily conversations that build relationships and bridges to create unity and help us to do the most good that we can do. And we ask that every decision tonight be made in the spirit of justice, mercy, and humility. In your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Angela. Mr. English, would you do the pledge for us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thanks, Dan. Amendment to the agenda, council? Seeing none, we will open our public comments. Hopefully, if you're interested in addressing us, there's a sign-up sheet. All right. All the way from Coeur d'Alene, Ben Wolfinger. Come on down. How are you, Ben?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Ben Wolfinger from here in Coeur d'Alene. Do we have to give our address anymore? It used to be the way when I was sat up there. That's great. Thank you. Well, I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Public Golf Course Foundation. I have the privilege of chairing that board. And we want to talk to you about the golf course and the foundation and our partnership here with the city. You know, the Coeur d'Alene Public Golf Club opened in 1957 as a private course open for the public. And it receives no tax dollars, absolutely none. The course plays host this season to... How many guests... You want to take a guess how many rounds of golf went through the public golf course this year?
Six.
Fifty thousand four hundred rounds.
And how many of those were yours?
One hundred and ten.
There you go.
Those golfers weren't only just locals, they came from faraway as Europe and New Zealand, and a whole lot of folks from this area. The driving range has a ball dispenser that spits out golf balls, depending on the size of bucket you want. You want to take a guess on how many golf balls it spit out this year?
Five hundred thousand.
Two million four hundred and one thousand three hundred and twenty-five practice balls came out of that machine.
And do we have a tax on those or anything?
Yeah. I like the way you think there. It gets a lot of play for a private course. And we use that course's popularity to give back to our community. What you're seeing here are pictures of golf camp and the kids who got to participate in golf camp this year. The foundation, though worked in the background for many years, finally became a nonprofit in 2019 as the Friends of the Coeur d'Alene Public Golf Club Foundation, better known as just the Friends Foundation. We're a nonprofit with core goals of developing programs benefiting young people and maintaining golf affordability for the working-class population of Cootney County. The Coeur d'Alene Public Course is the least expensive course in Cootney County. We support the Lake City High School's young men and women's golf teams as they use the public golf course as their home course. As a foundation, we operate several fundraising events during the year to raise money to help the course cover unforeseen costs, replace key equipment, but our main focus is to help introduce the youth of Coeur d'Alene to the game of golf and encourage their pursuit of excellence. Over the past five years, our work has provided free golf lessons, free equipment, sponsorships to talented young golfers, and discount golf opportunities to over thousands of young people in Cootney County. The past three summers, we have worked with the Coeur d'Alene Recreation Department and the Boys and Girls Club to offer golf camps for young people ages seven to thirteen. Our golf camps are staffed by volunteers, so our ratio is always one instructor for every four young people. And that's a safety thing for us as well. This year, we had forty different volunteers work with kids in our camps. We're able to provide golf instruction and life lessons to these young men and women from all economic backgrounds. The Recreation Department handles all the registration and scheduling, and we provide the PGA professionals, volunteer coaches, background checks for those volunteers, and training for the volunteers before they ever see a kid on the course. We also provide all the instructional time and junior-sized equipment for the young people to use. By helping to keep the game of golf affordable, introducing young people to the game, and teaching life lessons on patience and sportsmanship, we will continue with the partnership of the Coeur d'Alene Rec Department to serve our community in a positive manner. We're not here with a handout tonight. I know you like to hear that. We just want you to help us celebrate our current partnership with the Recreation Department and the 249 children who came through golf camp this year. I get it, I'm getting beeped. Okay. We want to take this ability... We look forward to taking this program into the future, and we're already looking forward to next summer's golf camps. By the way, if any of you want to improve your golf game, come volunteer to be a coach because there's no better way to learn than to teach. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great report. We love the Coeur d'Alene Golf Course. Just a quick question. The children that are signing up through our park and rec, is that a scholarship opportunity or how is that handled? I should know that, but I don't.
Yeah, that's really probably a better question for Adam. He's here.
Okay.
Boy. This was not part of the plan.
So for those, we don't typically do scholarships. We have done a few at the request of Ken Catalano, who's one of the board members. But typically, it's just that camp fee that we charge there, just like swim lessons and some of that stuff.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. By the way, our fee, we always take fifty percent to help fund our site, as opposed to most places that take seventy, I know, with parks.
Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have enough instructors?
We always could use more volunteers.
I wonder why you were looking right at me when you said you can get better if you coach.
Well, you probably have a little more time now to work on that.
Tons of time, yes.
Okay.
Great job, Ben. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
Thanks, Ben. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, from Hayden, Alina Bradley. Come on down, Alina. Next, I guess Savannah Ralston. No, both from Hayden Lake. I guess they had to go home. Virginia Tate. Welcome, Virginia.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Virginia Tate, and I reside at 4176 East Potlatch Hill Road in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I've been a resident here... My family's been a resident here and homesteaded in the early 1900s. I am here tonight to request your assistance to resolve a good neighbor water hookup, which is detrimental. And I will hit this briefly since I know we only have three minutes. This issue on the water spans back to the 1970s when Armstrong Park was put in and the developer and the city needed a different way to get up the hill and requested that we provide a road through that bifurcated our property to access Armstrong Park. It is the only road that goes up and down that hill. And I say this because in exchange for this... Now, mind you, I was a very small minor child when this happened, but the deal was that we were granted water and sewer hookups when we were ready to hook up to the city. That, again, I realize that that was the developer, although the city was in full knowledge because the sewer hookups exist and are underground today. Fast-forwarding to 2019, it became apparent that we were still having some water issues, getting water access, and we explained that this was part of the deal. We seeded the road from where Potlatch Hill makes the dogleg back to the unimproved portion up to Armstrong Park. And that really was an incomplete easement. I'm sure there's a better legal term for that, but an incomplete easement. In that exchange, we agreed to seed our north four acres into the city of Coeur d'Alene, and we installed a fire hydrant on the north side of our property. What was also installed at the city's expense was the fire hydrant that was supposed to have been on the corner at the dogleg at Potlatch Hill Road since the 1970s. So both of those were installed. To give you one more piece of information, when I built my house in 2000, the county requested, and we provided, an emergency fire hydrant that is actually on our property adjacent to our buildings. In 2020, we came to the city and said, "We are now ready to take the water main back" because we had discussed a water main, and we had had engineering that the city requested that we pay for and that the Olson Engineering Group provided to bring a water main back from the most... From the corner of the unpaved road, the one that the city put in, and bring back to our property to and through to the edge of my property line, and then to hook up to that. The city denied that we could put that water main in. They said they absolutely could not put that water main in under the current circumstances. So we did not. We had contractors at the ready, and we were not allowed to do so. Fast-forwarding to 23 and 24 and now 25, may I continue?
Yes.
We have dealt with an issue where a neighbor wanted... Has allowed a lease with an AT&amp;T tower of 150 to 175 feet to be put right on our property line. We brought this to the city's attention. The city did not say... Did not give any input as to whether there was additional fire protection needed and whether a water line should be drugged back by AT&amp;T, who did in fact have the money to pay for that, so there would be no fire protection. Following that, the county reported that because there was a fire hydrant at the corner, because there was a fire hydrant on my property, and because there was a fire hydrant on my north property line that I installed, there was no necessary additions to fire. They were not necessary under the current circumstances. Moving forward, because of the water situation as the city has expanded and additional people have moved on the end of the unimproved road, our water level became dangerously low. And we asked for, and then were instructed, to move forward and put in a water line from our well, straight down across our property, over the side of the hill, and hook up to the fire hydrant we installed. That is less than 250 feet from our structures. We then moved forward and said, "We are ready to complete installation and hookup to this water line so that we can get it underground before the ground freezes," because, of course, it has to be underground and protected, or it causes problems for everybody. We were then told we needed to annex. We file... We met with city. They said, "We will accept you as is." Now, I want to... For those of you who don't know, well, we do have Elk Point Events. It is only run several months a year, and there is no open flame. So there's not an open flame kitchen. I'm not sure where this wild rumor has come from, but there is not a flame there. We have then been told, well, you can't hook up as the good neighbor policy, then turned around and said, "Well, you can annex, and you're coming in as is," only to be said, we signed the paperwork, we filed our document, and the city cashed our $350 check on October 31st that said, "We'll go forward with our pre-annexation meeting, and we'll come to council on the first council meeting," which I believe was November 4th, that was pulled from the docket saying that, "We now have to bring in a water main from the corner and bring it to and through." So I am here to request, and respectfully request, that this issue be resolved. The city has certainly spent plenty of my money, having me do all the things they have liked me to do, and then deny it. I request your help in taking this to conclusion and completing the good neighbor hookup till we can work out a suitable annexation agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Jeff Podowski from Pouse Falls. Are you here, Jeff?
Jeff Podowski here. I do concur with everything Virginia Tate has stated.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll look into that. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Council announcements? Kiki?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Bear with me, this one's a little bit long, but there's just some things I had to share. Sometimes things come before council, and they're a surprise. This last... A few weeks ago, there was a motion to amend the agenda, and... This last, a few weeks ago, there was a motion to amend the agenda and add an item to direct staff to change the road usage through Indian Meadows, and it was changed to direct eventually the discussion on the use of the ingress egress roads. I don't believe we were within the definition of an emergency item on this topic. So I discussed this uncomfortable feeling I had about that with the city attorney, and his position is that it's not his place to define what council thinks is an emergency, so that's why he didn't weigh on, weigh in to offer any advice. I asked about giving input to staff prior to this requested meeting at the end of that council meeting, and it was advised that I not do that. So I'm taking this opportunity to share a few things, get them off my chest, and make sure that if there's anyone else who may feel the same way, they have the opportunity to do the same. I believe the developer and the staff listened diligently to the public input, and they acted on it. However, I thought about this for a number of months, and I think it's wrong not to state the long-term detrimental effects of listening to the wishes of a few and making drastic decisions with a little political posturing involved. It's my thought that all seven roads should have remained connectors as they were intended to be when this area was plotted and developed. I know that this area was always intended to have all roads go through Indian Meadows and connect to future roads in the farmland. There aren't cul-de-sacs, there aren't T-turns or dead ends. Each of these streets connects to the adjoining land. The utility infrastructure in these roads does not end at the last house, it continues to the natural connecting point to the continuation of that road. These roads have concrete jersey barriers at the saw-cut edge adjoining the field, which are an obvious temporary block for traffic. And I really find it hard to believe anyone who bought there, or any realtor who sold a property there, would swear under oath that they did not believe these roads were, with temporary termination abutting, a field would never be punched through. I feel that by throttling the access, we have not considered thousands of citizens who will suffer the impact of bad planning. We've caused irreparable harm for decades to thousands of current citizens, businesses, even those in Indian Meadows neighborhoods, and the neighborhoods in the surrounding properties. Developments all over have through-and-crew connector streets for access. We have not determined that any of them have been vacated in a, in a, in a way that is as radical as this. It may be too late, as the process may have evolved for the developer, but I want to assure that the public is aware of what council's decisions are doing. Public safety will eventually be affected in response times. Traffic will be further congested on the materials, access, and surrounding roads. Traffic will be reducted in a larger way as folks find shortcuts through surrounding residential neighborhoods. Traffic, insurance premiums for residents may be higher due to a lack of access. Families will be affected by having to drive exponentially out of their way to access schools that are close by. Residents even in Indian Meadows will be forced to add unnecessary miles and cost to daily commutes for work, groceries, and other needs. It's my belief that I had to make these things noted, that this shouldn't have been allowed to occur, and I feel like it forever negatively impacts thousands of citizens, that we also need to listen to their thoughts. I know that this is supposed to come back to us, I just wanted to have the opportunity to put this on record, so that staff can have, or council can have, a public discussion about the real long-term effects of the use of roads in this location, and have staff weigh in and determine if it's feasible or logical to even go back to the developer at all. So thank you very much for letting me get that off my chest.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gookin?
Thank you. Thank you, Kiki. I'm glad you brought up traffic. Traffic is a, is going to be a tremendous issue with the, with Courter and the way it impacts the surrounding areas, which is why I voted against it, and everyone up here had that opportunity. Yeah, one of the big problems we have in this country with government is that it's an impression, especially at the high level, Washington, that our government really doesn't care about us. And I would love to prove that wrong in the only power I have, which is here locally, which is to try to say that, yeah, we do care about an established neighborhood, and about people who live here now, and addressing their concerns. And a great example of that was Ms. Tate, who, I think she's gone, but I know that she had a, there was some family, something going on. And I think we can do what we can to show a little compassion and a little respect for people who want their government to react to them in a positive and encouraging manner, instead of just slamming a door. And that's what I hope we can accomplish up here with Courter and Indian Meadows, and with Ms. Tate and her issue, is that maybe we can focus on solving problems and not creating them.
Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to know, what's the process for following up? I've actually emailed Troy, and we've communicated a few times about Ginny Tate's issue. What will be the process now? What happens?
Mayor and council, this staff has dealt with this item for hours and hours. We have been in direct communication. It, communication stopped about four weeks ago. The information you received tonight had portions of it being accurate. We went above and beyond and gave her, gave her a temporary hookup this year off of our fire hydrant. She does not qualify for the good neighbor, because she can be annexed, she is congruent to it, that's why we're bringing the annexation agreement forward. The fact is, we did not know that this summer she shut down her well. So when she says "fire department," that was not our fire department, that was Cootney Fire that was authorizing that other system that's on her property. As we looked at the distance up the road, which the good news is, we can get up that Potlatch Hill Road, which has a really tight corner, and so our fire department's been out there and worked on that. Yes, pulling the water line was not done with the infrastructure improvements she did to basically bring a sewer line down and bring the water line down. We have a temporary hookup. The pressure right now is the fact that it is turning into cold weather, that hookup is above ground, and we had been contacting her, I contacted her again today. So we thought we had an agreement, it probably fell apart as she had that commercial kitchen installed sometime with the county, and that was, that's where we, she was bringing up the flame and things like that. So we're trying to get a fire hydrant from the city-fed water system up on her property. So she's chosen not to enter into an agreement that said she would annex, and the annexation would occur in the future, so that we could go in and get this water tied up this fall. We would give her time to work through the details of all of the processes, but we were probably 85, Randy worked on it heavily, planning's been on this, fire department's worked on it. And so, sitting here and absorbing the fact that we do appreciate our constituents and the hours that we have spent with Ginny Tate, is tough to swallow from what we have done now. She can have her portion of what we've been up to, but I can back it up with our staff and the agreement that we've presented to her. So I would suggest to you, it's an additional cost on the fire line, that wasn't very exciting. Otherwise, I thought we were pretty close, we had hoped to bring it here the first meeting in November.
Thank you, Troy. Mr. English? Well, just, I appreciate that background, and also on, and Kiki's comments, the, you know, Courter access, I mean, it's still a very live issue and different things, and we are going to have to balance, I mean, the people who are immediately affected by something, you know, have a heightened perspective, and that's why part of the process is, you know, mail notices and everything, but it's also, I mean, part of the whole system, so, you know, there isn't probably a quick, easy answer, but for me, in every part of it, and it still will be going forward, is, is the public safety, you know, having enough access, and in the right, you know, kind of mixture of locations, so, yeah, but appreciate the input, and it's, you know, far from a final decision on that, so. Thank you, Dan. Any other announcements? Kenny?
I'm gonna go a little different direction here, if I could, real quick. I would like to congratulate Scott Robinson from the Fire Department, who just got promoted to engineer. That's a very long, arduous process, and it's a great, the best part of being, becoming an engineer, is there's two of them back there, is you never have to take that test again. So, congratulations to paramedic Robinson, and a big congratulations to firefighter/paramedic Cody Moore and his dog, Sky, who just got their FEMA certification. And that, again, is a huge thing, and a wonderful thing for our city to be very, very proud of. So, good job, gentlemen.
And aren't they doing a thing at the Eagles for the dog coming up? Do you guys know about that?
I have not heard anything.
Okay. There is going to be, he's going to be there.
You're holding back, huh?
I don't have all the details, I just heard about it.
All right. Any other comments? All right, moving on, I would like to do some appointments, please. Denise Yost, Mary Lee Reiba, and Kate Walker to the Arts Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Denise Yost, Mary Lee Reiba, and Kate Walker to the Arts Commission. Second.
Been moved and seconded, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Okey-doke.
English?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, business. Resolution 25062, amending personnel rule one, general provisions, rule 10, probationary period, rule 12, pay adjustment, and rule 13, transfer, demotion, layoff, resignation, and reinstatement. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the personnel rule amendments that I'm bringing back tonight are still specific to the probationary period for our lateral police officers. The main amendment is around the probationary period changing laterals from 18 months to 12 months. There's a few different rules that we're moving the probationary language out of and putting it all into the same rule 10, so it all falls under the same rule. And then clarifying the HR Director's role in appointments, which was brought up in the last council meeting, and just some general clarification and housekeeping amendments. So the rules identified are rule 1, 10, 12, and 13. Again, all four of those rules have probationary language in them that we will be moving to rule 10. So while I'm in that rule, I'm just bringing some other general amendments forward that make sense and clears up some of the language. So before I jump into just the summary of those rules, I did want to just go through kind of my process that I go through in updating the rules and the discussion that goes around that, before I actually get to a council meeting to present the amendments in front of you. So under personnel rule one, section two states that the HR Director will prepare any of the amendments and recommend them to the city council. And also with that, the city attorney approves any of the amendments prior to them being submitted to council as well. So when I have a personnel rule amendment, the first thing I do is consult with my attorney, and he reviews all the proposed amendments and proposes any edits to those amendments, so, which I did on these on October 13th. And then I follow up with that, those amendments to our executive team, that consists of all of our department heads and upper managers attend that meeting as well, to get any feedback and changes from them. And then, once I have that, which I did on the 16th, I then send the proposed amendments to our union and association presidents to review, which I did on the following day, the 17th, and received confirmation from the Police Association, Lake City Employees Association, and the Fire Union, that they had no concerns with the original proposed amendments. So after I kind of get the green light there, I then distribute all the amendments to all of our employees, elected officials, and all of the employees that fall under those employee associations. And then I let them know what meeting that they can come forward and present any concerns. So at that time, I had posted that they could come forward to the October 27th General Services and Public Works meeting. And then Councilmember Gookin let me know that that meeting actually turned into a council workshop, so I then posted it again on the 22nd, that I would just bring it straight to council on November 4th. So a day after I posted it for the second time, I received a call from Captain Hager, who is in our police department, requesting that the amendment, which the original amendment was changing all police officers to a 12-month probationary period. He requested that amendment be only for the laterals, and to keep the entry-level police officer recruits at an 18-month probationary period. Chief White also confirmed that he would like the same for the police officer recruits. So I amended the 12-month probationary language to what I then sent out a second time to clarify that all of our employment, employees, with the exception of our entry-level, our entry-level police officer recruits, would be a 12-month probation, and the recruits would remain at 18 months. Chief White approved that on the 27th, Police Association approved that on the 30th, to which I provided my staff report and all the information to the council packet, and presented that on November 4th to council. There was concern that the POA had some issues with the proposed amendments. The direction from council was to go back and further discuss with the Police Association, to which I did. The, the only amendment that was discussed was under rule one, under appointments. So you can see at the top there, the original amendment was changing appointments shall be made by the HR Director. I amended that to the department head with the approval of the HR Director. The Police Association asked if we could change that approval word to "in consultation," which I had no concerns with. So I sent that amended language back on November 6th, and the POA, Police Officers Association and Administration confirmed that they were good with that, which is a copy of the email there, approving the amendments. So then, back to those four rules, they're the same as they were when I presented last time, with the exception of that section six, the appointments made by the department head in consultation with the HR Director. So, under section five, still the same amendment, removing the language of council repealing the entire set of rules and having to publish that in the newspaper. All amendments would follow the same process. The probationary language is being removed, because it's being replaced in rule 10, and then just some general housekeeping changes. And then, under rule 10, is where all the probationary language will then all sit under that same rule, amending the lateral police officers to 12 months, and just some of the current process around options at the end of probation, and how that probationary period is established. We added transfers to the six-month promotion language, which is also our current practice, it just doesn't have transfer included. Section four clarifies what happens if the employee doesn't pass probation, and then, again, some general housekeeping changes. And then, under rule 12, again, removing the probation, probationary language, because it's placed in rule 10, just clarifying some language on our current practice, removes an outdated reference to a 5% increase on probation. Again, more housekeeping language. And then, under rule 13, just deleting that language, because it's replaced in rule 10. So again, all of those amendments are the same, except for the "in consultation with the HR Director." So in conclusion, amending the lateral police officer probation to 12 months is desirous of the police department, admin, and the association. That 18-month probationary period language was approved many, many years ago, far before we even had a lateral program. Clarifying appointments are changed by the department head in consultation with the HR Director. All the proposed amendments falling under the same rule 10, just some general clarity with language and removing outdated information. My recommendation would be council should approve the amendments to rule 1, 10, 12, and 13. My recommendation would be council should approve the amendments to Rule 1, 10, 12, and 13.
Thank you, Melissa. Questions for Melissa? Amy?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for going back and circling back with everybody and bringing it back to us. I appreciate the extra work you did.
Sure, you're welcome. There's no other questions, Mr. Mayor?
I'll need a motion, Ben.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-062, amending personnel rule number one, Rule 1, general provisions, Rule 10 probationary period, Rule 12 pay adjustment, and Rule 13 transfer, demotion, layoff, resignation, and reinstatement.
Second. You ladies first.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please, Joe.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Thank you again, Mel. Next up, Resolution 25065, approval of the professional services agreement with JUB Engineering for Tertiary Membrane Filtration Expansion Project, Phase 5C-3A, in the amount of $814,600. Mike Becker, welcome.
Thank you, good evening Mayor and Council. This evening, I get to present the wastewater department's request for professional services contract with JUB. This is for a tertiary membrane filtration project. Now, what is that exactly? Well, I'm going to abbreviate it by TMF, that way I'm not up here for my usual time. The TMF facility is the final stage in our treatment process where we removed ammonia and phosphorus from our wastewater prior to disinfection and discharge into the Spokane River. Here in this photograph, you see Phase 5C-1, this is Phase 1. We built this project in 2014, it provided 1 million gallons a day of filtration. That got us by for a little while while we contemplated on how we were going to proceed with the additional expansion. On Phase 2, 5C-2, which is this slide on the right, we finished out that project where we built all the tanks except for this one that's on the Far North Side. That is actually Train 6, and that was left empty. The reason why we left it empty is we applied for SRF loan, and loan restrictions did not pay for additional capacity. That train would fall under the additional capacity at that time. Again, this was constructed in 2019, so here we are at Train 6 now. What is the purpose of this project? Well, it is to increase our capacity from 5 million gallons a day to 6. It also will provide redundant treatment operations should we have to take out any one of these other trains for whatever reasons. We sometimes have to clean them out, we sometimes have to repair new, some of the membranes. This project has been identified in our facility plan, was scheduled for 2027. Based on our historical flow and additional capacity required of this portion of the facility, we need this to be operational sometime in 2028. So, here are some fun facts that I wanted to bring up to your attention. What you're looking at is the actual workhorse of the membrane. Currently, we have five trains, and there's six cassettes in each train. And bottom line is, we have, if you were to unfold each one of these fibers, you would have 13.5 acres of coverage of membrane surface that we are treating the effluent through. Each one of those has holes in them, and it's .04 microns. I got it on a good source today that the average human hair is 40 microns. So, imagine a human hair chopped up 1,000 times. That's how tiny those holes are in those noodles. We have 13 and a half acres. Train 6 would contribute another 2.8 to 2.9 acres. So, how did we get to this point? Well, pursuant to Idaho Code and our procurement policies, we went out for RFP. We received two of them from pre-qualified engineering firms, and JUB was selected as a preferred consultant. One of the stipulations in our pre-qualification process is that each firm had to demonstrate that they had the qualifications, the experience, and the existing capacity. We did not want them to go out and start hiring people to be able to finish this project for us. So, JUB has done numerous projects, oops, for the city, but this will be our first time working with JUB inside the treatment plant. We feel that they can do an adequate job, as they have done with many of our projects. When I say "our" projects, that includes streets, water, and the sewer collection system. Over the past few weeks, we have negotiated with JUB three times on the scope of work, the negotiated fees, and a schedule. And upon completion, I want to bring this to your attention, this is only for design of this highly technical facility that we're dealing with. The reason why we are going out with a professional engineer on this is that we do not have the capacity to do this in-house. So, we went out for RFP, and we have planned for this project. We have budgeted for it accordingly. And within my staff report, I have a breakdown of the design phase services. And then you'll also see under Task 900, there's a $50,000 management reserve. What is that for? Well, since 2014, the technology has changed. As good as we are at the wastewater department, we don't know all the technologies out there. These guys do. So, we're going to capitalize on the fact that we may look at doing something that's similar in nature, that doesn't require radically changing the TMF facility. And whenever we get their pre-design report, we'll be able to make a determination on which direction we end up going. So, with that, it is staff's recommendation that we execute a professional services agreement with JUB for the work associated with the TMF project in the amount of $814,600. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Questions for Mike? I just wonder, is there, you know, when we look at this, it looks like another of the same kind of thing. Is there anything unique about this one than the ones that have come before? Or just one more of the same?
We have looked at both situations, one more of the same. However, the same technology, we're using Veolia membranes.
Yeah.
And that same technology has expanded from our original 400 square feet of membrane surface area to 470 now. And so, there's an increased capacity there.
Yeah.
The technology would operate very similar to what we have now.
Yeah, okay. Chrissy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I know that this is part of the long-term strategic plan to be completed by 2027, correct?
It needs...
This phase?
We're aiming for 2027, but it needs to come online by 2028, sometime in 2028.
And then, could you just identify that this is also part of your budget for this year? This isn't additional? This was in the plan?
Yes. Within the staff report, I did outline the budget account number, and we have budget for this. Lessons learned from our current project that we're closing up on right now is that we were told we would get a piece of equipment in a year. Six months down the road, they called me up and say, "We're in Chicago, can you take delivery?" Thank goodness we had money in that account, right? Because they wanted payment. So, yes, we budgeted for this, and we're anticipating, we've been told 72 weeks to get these membranes, but lessons learned is, who knows what happens in six months down the road? I'm not going to say, "No, you can't deliver it."
Great, thank you.
Yes? Can I have, just ask for clarification, kind of along where Dan went? So, we're adding another train?
Yes.
We think, unless the technology's changed and there's another pathway, or we are duplicating what we've done to add the expansion, right?
We're just simply adding the membranes in that last tank. So, if there's a different technology that can fit in that tank, we're not going to build a new tank.
Okay.
If there's another technology that can fit in that tank, that can enhance and lower our OIM costs, enhance our capacity, and, you know, operate in a similar fashion that doesn't require us to radically change how we operate up there, we'll go that route, if it's economically feasible and physically feasible, yes.
So, you'll be coming with a choice at some point, right? Go this way or that way?
When we get, we will go to design in this, so we will have the decision process, and then we can list it out. Are you asking me to bring this before council, or can I do a heads-up on this?
Just wondering, how we just keep expanding it with the, but you say, "Technology changes," and it gets better, right?
If it can offer the city a savings, you bet.
You're good at that, Mike, appreciate that. Right, no other questions, I'll look for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-065, approving professional services agreement with JUB Engineers Incorporated for the Tertiary Membrane Filtration Expansion Project, Phase 5C dot 3A, in the amount of $814,600.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please, Joe.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Well, Mike, welcome back again. This is about the compost facility, one of my favorite places.
You bet. Yeah, it was a long walk up here. We've been here before, this is the compost facility. As you may recall, we did this project last year. We brought it to a close on September 30th, and so now we're bringing the change orders before council to be ratified. Just a quick recap, this is our compost building number one. This is where we make our compost in the wintertime as much as possible. The old method is we would stick these pipes in, on the ground, and we'd bury them with compost. Well, as you can see, they get flat, they get ripped apart, and become absolutely useless. So, we put our brains together and tried to figure out something, and we did that a few years back on a project, and we're just simply, you know, cookie cutter in it, where we go from above ground to below ground. And this is where you can see these trench drains that have these pipe penetrations through this wall that has that pink paint on there that will turn brown eventually. That's where the air goes in and out of those trench drains. And those plates that are covering up next to my finally unpolished shoes are where the air penetrates up and out of our compost facility. So, this is what the final product looks like. It was an asphalt floor. Keep in mind that this was built over a burn dump, and so there's a lot of pockets of unsuitable material out there. Councilman English knows. But anyways, there was some extra work that needed to be done out here. And what you're looking at is basically the final product before we actually build the compost piles in the building. Well, change order number two was the most significant. And we had problems with water ponding up inside the building. Nobody wants to have water on their floors inside the building. And so, compost facility was one of those. So, we went ahead and we looked at the options of, since we already got a contractor on site, and he was bringing out paving equipment anyways, to capitalize on that single mobilization cost, on what it would take to clean that up out there. And so, this is where change order number two came in, and as you can see, we have a before and after shot. During the process, we also discovered that somewhere in the city's past, we decided to pave nine inches of asphalt out there. I'm probably standing on six inches tops of concrete right now inside of a building. There was nine inches of asphalt out there. Well, if we're going to rip up that nine-inch asphalt, we've got to replace it with something. So, we brought in, the cheapest thing we could do is bring in gravel, compact it, and we still went with our three to four inches of asphalt out there. So, this slide shows the breakdown. It's in the staff report of where we were. As you can see, the top line, we budgeted $455,000. Keep in mind, this project was rebid because the first time at bat, we didn't have enough money in the budget. So, we revisit this project, and this is where we're at. Right now, we have spent $379,232.50, so we're well under that budgeted amount. So, with that, it is wastewater's recommendation that council ratify change orders number one and three for the compost facility in the amount of $59,232.50. And with that, my new ballers will answer any questions for you.
Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Roll call?
Just one, Mike, is there a change order number two coming in on this?
No, this is actually, we just compiled all three change orders into one presentation here.
Oh, one, two, and three.
So, we're done with this project.
Okay.
No more change orders after today.
Got it.
On this project.
Look for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-066, ratifying change orders one through three for the compost facility maintenance project contract with Cellon Construction.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Joe.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Welcome Deputy Chief Bill DeRider.
Good evening, I had to follow membranes and compost piles. So, I think you got my paper, that's all right. I'm here tonight, Mr. Mayor and Council, to seek approval for sole sourcing the fabrication of our new fire training facility with Taylor Canisters. Taylor Canisters builds these fire training facilities out of C containers, so it's pretty specialized, and they're the local company that does that around here. So, a little history. Firefighters constantly trained. Our facility that we have right now was built in 2006 out of the 2005 Fire and Police Bond. As you can see, it's used quite a bit. We trained hundreds of firefighters at this facility. Currently, we have seven firefighters right now in our academy, and they're using it. We also have 15 firefighters with the Workforce Training Fire Academy using it as well. We do two programs with that now with the college, so it's been pretty successful. Our training facility is going to keep being used. We're not going to get rid of it, we're not tearing down the five-story training facility. It still has a lot of use in it, we use it for repelling, we use it for live fire and that kind of thing. But the new facility is going to go right here. So, we don't have a lot of space out there. This is a ventilation prop, and then we have some other props that you can see. The one down there in the bottom, that's a garage door prop. This new facility will have all those separate props integrated into it. So, this is the outside of the new proposed facility. We have return stairs, we have different levels of ventilation that you can do different pitched, either on the second story or on the first story. The two C containers that are on top, that will be 16 by 20, that'll be a flat roof ventilation, so we've incorporated the ventilation prop that we're tearing down into this facility. It will also have a forcible entry door to force entry into that facility built in. It also has a garage door prop. Right behind it will be the burn room, so we can actually light a fire and then cut, simulate a garage door to put that fire out. And then this is the inside. So, you got Floor 1, which is three... today as well as residential structures that are being built, so we can train on them and we could actually train fire to go down the hallways in this facility.
This is a lot nicer than those apartments.
Yes. Nobody can live in this.
You sure?
So it's our recommendation, or my recommendation, that council approves the sole sourcing of the new fire facility to Taylor Canisters. Do you have any questions?
Kenny.
He's first.
Oh, I'll defer to the fire chief.
Thank you. Part of the allure of this type of a construction is the ease of maintenance too, correct?
Yes.
And it fits at least okay with the footprint out there?
Yes.
Christie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Bill, you know, I trained as a police officer inside the old one and that was a long time ago. So yes, we need a new facility. But my question is, will this be sufficient to host our own fire ops, which for the record, I don't want to go to that again. Once was enough, it was great. But could we host fire ops?
Yes, yes, we can.
That's really cool. Yeah, well, I'm so grateful to the people that voted yes on this bond and to council for approving the police training facility too. It's incredibly important that police and fire have excellent training facilities and keep up on training for their own safety and for the safety of our citizens, so good work on this.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have one. What's the timeline on this? This doesn't take as much time as a fire truck or anything, does it?
No, we'll have this done by next October.
Really? Nice. Hey, council, I'll look for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to, for Resolution 25067, declaring there's only one vendor reasonably available for the purchase and installation of a new fire training facility in a warning to contract with Taylor Systems LLC in the amount of $373,820.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Question. Randy, do we need to read the code in that motion?
It would be helpful.
Okay. Just to modify the motion to mention that this is pursuant to Idaho Code 672808 subsection 2.
Discussion. Roll call, please, Joe.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Gukin.
Of course.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Thank you, everyone.[1672.24]